Hello, everyone. It is six oh one. I'd like to call the meeting of Rappel Town School Board to order. You could all stand for the pledge of by the legion We'll start by asking for motion for approval of the agenda and also if there's any additions, changes. Um, one change is to remove the executive session at the beginning of the meeting. If needed later, we can add it in, but right now we don't have support. Anyone else? Anyone want to make a motion?
I'm voting like a motion.
Thank you, Colin. And I assume that motion was to approve the agenda.
Everything you said.
Yeah. Um, all in favor? Thank you. Great. And now we're on to teacher, staff, and community comments. And we have some students in the audience today that wanted to make a presentation. Um, and also make a request afterwards. So you're welcome to come up. So we've asked these students to come tonight and talk a little bit about tomato sphere. So tomato sphere is a collaboration between our elementary classrooms, some of our elementary classrooms, and our middle school. And so we just wanted to share with you guys some of the things that we're doing with that because it's our second year in the program and we'd like to continue. Do that. Um, this year the PTO gave us some funds to even improve our design by having some more light boxes. So these were some students that I really wanted to share what we do. So I wanted to introduce some of my middle schoolers. So we have Lila, just give them a wave, Aiden, and Eliza. And then our elementary students, Will, Katie, and Enid. Awesome. Aiden, would you like to start us off?
Yep. Tomato sphere is a study where we received two sets of seeds. One sit on earth and the other spent six weeks on the International Space Station. We didn't know which ones were which, so we collected data on the number of each that sprouted. This study is important because we are exploring options to colonize space and we need to know the effects on gra- of gravity on seeds.
Okay. At the end of the 10 weeks, I predicted that the seeds in the red pots went space because my little buddy and I were still in church, so we guessed. Our results showed no scientific difference in the number of seeds that sprouted between space and earth seeds. Of the hundred seeds that planted that went space, ninety-two sprouted. Of the hundred seeds that stayed on earth, ninety-five sprouted.
Uh, my favorite activity was making fortune tellers on the solar system. And I did this activity with my little buddies, Rosie, Katie, and Amy. I like this activity because we blend a lot, bring back, and she's a good bonding to me.
So we used to call them like hoodie catchers, so the ones that they pick through and have to pick up, yeah.
Uh, my name's Will. Uh, my big buddies were Ronan and Jayden. One thing I liked about working with a middle schooler that uh was doing uh experiments with them, they were very funny. When I get to seventh grade, I think I'll be a great big buddy because I will be ready to help my little buddy with ideas, building, et cetera.
My favorite activity was planting these seeds. I did this activity. I liked this activity because I like to get my answer and plant things in my garden. My name is Katie. My favorite activity was making straw rockets. I did this activity with my little buddy, Dave. I like this activity because I like making it happen.
I was so impressed with the things that we remembered because we did this for 10 weeks. And 10 weeks is a long time in the middle school world. It's a really long time in the elementary world. So there are two years gave up a chunk of time at the end of the day um to come down to our room and work together. So we want to reinstate the big buddy, little buddy program next year pending scheduling and availability of classes. So that was one thing that we really wanted to see how this works. And in my opinion, it was a huge success partnering them up and just giving them a chance to get to know each other. And as a middle school teacher, it was really cool to see my middle schoolers just relax and have fun and just really, you know, be patient and kind with younger students because sometimes it can be tough and really competitive when you're in middle school. So it's really nice to see. So Katie and Amy are gonna offer you some plants. Um, choose wisely because they'll tell you what they are, what you picked when you're all done. Do you guys want me to carry it or do you have it? You got it. Okay. Um, they did three D print the stakes that you see in there. Um, it was my first introduction in doing Tinkercad with um elementary students. So it was really interesting for me to to learn how to simplify and be able to expose them to that. So it was a really cool project for them to do. So we gave some templates and the next year, I'm hoping to open it up more now that I have a better sense of what second and fourth graders can do with a three D printer. Yes, you may have some good root bases there. They weren't ready at your May meeting, so we, they've been ready for a little while now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So they're gonna share with you based on your color of your pot. Do you guys remember if they picked a red container? Their seeds went
To space.
To space. So who got a red container? It's your cell. There we go. And if they got a black container, they
Earth.
They, they're the ones that stayed on earth. So two years doing this, I haven't seen any like fuzzy pink tomatoes or purple tomatoes yet. So hopefully those of you who have space, if you get anything interesting, we'd love to see some pictures to see what you got from gravity. So, yes. Sorry, you practiced that earlier. Did you guys have any questions for them about tomato sphere or partnering with bigs or littles? That's okay if you don't. It's a lot of fun for me. So thank you so much for letting us know all about. Thank you guys for coming tonight. I really appreciate it. Do you want to take your cards? Guys are fabulous. And I know some of them are going to head out because
I have a question. Do you want an update on as we plant these at home, update how well they're doing or?
Yeah, you get a space one. So I'm interested to see if you get anything funky. Um, last year when I planted mine, um, they all kind of cross pollinated. So I'm curious now. I kind of separated them in my yard to see if we could truly see what a space tree was without any cross pollination. So it'd be cool to see. Thanks. Guys are awesome. Good job. You did so good. You guys are amazing. Yeah, so would you mind? Yeah, right over here, just where you were again.
Hi, we are raising eighth graders at Rappel Town School. I'm Eliza Getty. I'm paying now.
I'm Aiden Fitzsimmons.
Hi, I'm Willie Jack. Here here's my request that the eighth grade students be allowed to attend the annual school trip to Washington DC on May thirteenth to seventeenth, twenty twenty four. We believe it is in plan that all of our classmates have the opportunity to visit our nation's capital.
We will be exploring many educational landmarks, including the US Capitol, Mount Vernon, many memorials, and the zoo.
We will be fundraising so every steward is able to attend regardless of financial need. We have a first fundraiser, a Yoncell, and Big Cell in the autumnest gym, the Saturday morning. Please come support us.
We hope that you can grant our request. We look forward to our trip next week. Please let us know if you have any questions.
So we as parents were told by Sarah Tesla that we had to come and ask for this approval. So yes, that is what we're doing. That motion? All in favor? If you guys get a chance to walk through the gym lobby, we've got set up for graduations tomorrow and they each write a letter, the current eighth grade. Um, and most of them have something in there about their memories of DC. As like something that they always wait to remember about being at Rappel Town School. So it's a really cool experience for them. Yeah, and thank you for bringing for you guys. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm gonna go too, just because Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And now we have Louis. Um, we moved him up to the beginning because he has a baseball game or softball game or something.
Good evening, everyone. Hello. Uh, so I have a few things on the agenda tonight. Um, the first one is the financial reports, which are in the packet. Um, if you have any questions after you review those, please feel free to to email me or call me and I can answer any questions you may have. Uh, on the tax anticipation note, uh, so that's a loan that we take out every year. It's a a line of credit. It allows us to have funds starting on July first uh while we wait for other revenue sources to come in. So our main source of of revenue for the school district is the town taxes. And we don't receive our first check until uh around the September timeframe. So we have to uh from July through September, we still have to make payroll. We have to pay um other expenses, supplies, getting the school up and running. Um, so in order to to fund those expenses for those three months as well as even ongoing throughout the year, because um there's times when we have more expenses than we have revenue until until the end of the year comes. Uh, we need to have a temporary loan to help fund those expenses. So we take a line of credit out each year. Um, we only take off the line of credit what we need and and when we have extra funds, we we pay it down. So we're only paying uh as much interest as we as we need to for the funds that we need at the time. Uh, so the line of credit for this year is uh $2 million and the interest rates are a lot higher this year than they have been in the past. And um that's just due to the current environment uh with interest rates increasing uh on pretty much everything. Um, so right now our interest rate for this is four point six seven percent. Uh, like I said, we'll, so we'll take some up, we'll take some out on July first. Um, but we'll only take out, we'll take it out in increments. So we'll take a few hundred thousand out at a time based on how much we need to fund our expenses at the time to to help reduce the interest cost throughout the year. So we would be looking for a motion to approve this loan. And then the documents, the official documents, Chris has those. And I've marked uh the places that the board needs to sign with the green tabs.
Do I hear a motion? Any discussion? All in favor? That part's done. Um, does anyone have any other questions for Louis? Because he won't be here most of the rest of the meeting. Anyone have any questions about anything coming up on the agenda?
So I did provide a report uh called Building Updates, which had updates on four different building projects that are currently going on. Um, there's the fire safety issue, which to to my knowledge, last I checked with Kelly, it was pretty much done. It was just waiting for some electrical work to be done. Um, and then it will be done before June thirtieth. Uh, most of that is being paid for out of a grant that we received. Um, and then the elevator in second floor is still a working prod uh process. Um, so there's uh, there is next steps on that for the board to to decide uh based on the architects and the engineering firm that came in. Um, so if there's any questions on any of those things, I can take them now.
Um, I I don't have a question on the building updates at this point, and thank you for including those in the packet, Louis. I just wanted to clarify that um I know when I first read that they got a gym curtain. I thought they were talking about the stage curtain. But what they're actually talking about is the gym divider. It's the that needed to be replaced. And we had had it in the budget for quite a while and they finally just got it.
Yep.
Is that right? Okay. Um, and then another question I had for you, Louis, was, and I know you answered this to me, but I just wanted to know if you had any more updates with. You had said that you believe, you know, if you had to um, you know, look into the future, that we'll probably end in the black. But not by much. So the reason I'm asking is because we are considering later tonight about um the seventh grade field trip and um some other items. So we're just trying to figure out, you know, if you had an estimate of what we could play around with. See.
So the the last update I provided, we were, we were in the black about thirty-seven thousand dollars. Um, I know since then we have got another fuel delivery, which uh because the the fuel company that we work with was willing to reduce the price due to the drop in the market. Uh, even though we were, uh, our contracted price was higher. So we did fill up all of our schools to take advantage of that. Um, so so that might have been another eight or 10,000. Um, however, there are a few uh pluses that were not included in that. So we have, we know the SU is running a surplus in both general, in the general fund and special ed. Uh, special, the special ed transportation expense, I um did a reconciliation of that uh earlier this week. And and that's gonna come in about $20,000 less than what we estimated. Um, and I believe our substitute expense is also gonna come in less than what we estimated. Uh, I mean, I I like to leave a little bit of buffer in case we have an extra tuition student or two that that were missed. But I would think we we probably have about twenty to thirty thousand dollars uh leeway.
And um, and I know I didn't ask you this before, but I just thought of it now. Has this school or any other school in the SU ever provided transportation for summer E S Y? Or tutoring?
We have not provided e- transportation for any type of summer programs in the, since I've been.
And do you know if the bus company um does that for other schools or you have no idea?
I do not know, no. Um, I mean, if 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 it's uh part of an I E P, then that probably would be a bill question because you're saying E S Y. Um, but for summer programs, um, for just like general ed programs, whether they're special ed or not, we have never provided transportation. Um, I don't want to say that we've never done it for E S Y because of that I'm not positive and that may have just been part of the special ed budget. Uh, but if if there's a special ed services that are needed and that's part of their I E P, um, hmm, then that might be something we provide, but that would really be a bill question. I wouldn't want to um answer that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else have any questions for Louis before he goes?
That was my question.
Well, hopefully you'll get some ball game in before the rain.
It's it's cloudy, but it's holding up.
Yeah, good. Well, have a good night.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right. Um, we are now on to old business. Um, Chris, would you be able to share the drawing of the second floor?
Uh, let me find it real quick. That's the one that you had shared with us?
Yes. Just waiting for Chris to share the drawing that we had, um, we just received from the NBF Architects. Um, and everyone a chance to ask questions. Thank you, Chris. I think it's the last drawing. That's good. Great, thanks. Um, so what the architects and the small group, which consisted of myself, Sarah, and Kelly, um, I believe. If there's anyone else there. Um, what, we went through the architect and kind of talked about a lot of things, one of which was classroom size. Um, and the original plans that we were given had had on the left side of the hall, the main center hallway, had had four classrooms. Um, those classrooms were almost half the size of our current middle school classrooms. So they, there's no way we could fit that many if we wanted to have a regular classroom up there. Um, so what we did was we tried to think about it from a middle school standpoint and move the English, history, and math classes up there in the three main classrooms. Um, the science classroom, we, um, the school had put in a lot of money into that space within the last decade or so. Um, so it doesn't, it didn't make sense to redo something that's already in really great shape. Um, plus it gives the middle schoolers, you know, a little bit of a different location throughout the day to visit, um, if we kept the science room downstairs. The other two spaces on the right, the L-shaped room, is it's listed as a multi-purpose space. But the goal of using that space on a general basis would be a special education classroom for the seventh and eighth grade students so that they're with their peers on the same level. Um, and then the squareish, smallest room towards the beginning of the stairs, um, where you walk up is an intervention or um conference room type space. So it just gives a little extra um flexibility. The, um, there's two sets of bathrooms on the left-hand side plus a teacher bathroom, um, which is adequate according to coding and the numbers that they looked at. And then there's also an included kind of a lounge space for the middle schoolers so that they have a place to do group work, socialize, um, just a nice place to sit and um, you know, develop as humans, not having to sit on the floor all the time, maybe want to chat with their friends kind of thing. Um, there's little circles that you see throughout. Um, those are just proposed um light tubes that would allow some natural light to come into those spaces where you see them. Um, a lot of the outside uh walls have windows, but not all of them do. And some of the spaces were a little dark and we just thought increasing some light would be helpful for keeping kids awake and engaged and alert. Um, and then there is a janitor closet and several other closets for both storage and for classroom teachers to use. Um, and it, the plans also includes a second egress, uh, which is already, was already planned for previously, um, but is put in the plan. So questions? Yes, let's start with. I wish I'd done how that this was when I saw it. I didn't realize it. Yeah, it's a nice space. Um, I think one of the nice trickle-down um benefits of moving the middle school upstairs is it allows for more flexibility down in the main area. Um, speaking with Sarah, my idea she had had was um on the primary wing, potentially moving where the preschool classrooms are into the bigger kindergarten rooms, which would allow for us to have more students without increasing teachers. Because right now, because our rooms are so small for pre-K, that's what's really limiting the amount of spaces we have for students. But by increasing um into the bigger kindergarten room and then maybe taking down the wall between the two preschool rooms, um, that would enable us to take, I think, ten or fifteen more students. Um, which would help some of our other issues that we've had over time with having such a long waitlist with preschoolers.
My one question is would be, is our, is our enrollment going up that we need this much to spend this much money on this much extra space? Are we going, you know, like what?
Do we even have the cost? There was gonna cost this.
We don't have the cost yet. Um, we want to have a community forum to talk to this out with the public and see what they're thinking about it. Um, I'm, we're, I believe that Ed had said he would get us kind of an estimate, but they didn't include it yet. And I sent a follow-up email today. I, she may have written back since I've checked my email, but I didn't get it before.
I just, I just see some spots where there's like by the bathrooms.
Mm-hmm.
There shouldn't be doors coming out of those classrooms.
Like a second door?
Yeah, for that hallway so that they can go to the bathrooms and then over on the
Do they need a second door from each classroom? Is that what you're saying?
Right. Right, yes. And then between these two rooms on the right, there needs to be a door. A fire door. Oh, I'm looking at three doors that need to be put in.
You add three doors. Thank you. And when we have that community meeting and kind of drive what you're talking
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because that would be three classrooms down here. Down in the main building, right, that we wouldn't be using.
At least, yeah.
At least.
Um, because there is a a middle school special ed room now down here.
Yeah.
So it'll be four.
It would be four.
Four. I just, I, you know, I just want to be prepared when we talk to people that like, yes, are, are we really increasing the amount of students? Like, are we running out of room? Be able to answer this to
So here's an example of um where we're at. We have very little space to grow.
Yeah.
Um, so there was a grant earlier this year that we had looked at getting for a um, like a athletic, a sport room or activity room. But in order to apply for this, you had to have a designated space that you could have there like circuit training slash weight area. And we don't have the space for it. But if we had this extra space, then we potentially would have.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then we look at our preschool of numbers, the, when this building was built, it wasn't filled with that much preschool in in mind. So now we took up some room for that. And we have a waitlist that we end up paying out. I think this year it was sixty-five thousand so far extra that we've paid out where we, those, that amount of students, we probably, we may have been able to absorb almost all of them if we had bigger classrooms. So there is definitely some areas that we could benefit, I think, from shifting this. Um, and there's probably more that we haven't even thought about yet.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, just having more space for tech ed, having more, maybe having a designated computer maker space lab, that's, you know, things like that. We just don't have room for those type of things right now. And that's, that's, you know, we don't know what the future will bring, but there's definitely at least areas right now that we would benefit.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Abby's point, what what's the code limit on our facilities today to be on? That people can get in the building?
I don't know.
How much does this allow up to grow?
Back when the school was built, we had five hundred thirty-four kids
Yeah.
in this building and we didn't have the specials way. So our room was like over there.
The kindergarten wasn't in mine back then. It was in Cheney Hill.
And but and codes have changed over time, too.
No, I understand. To the public, like this, we do this upgrade. It's there's a good probability we can't grow out of this space with our demographic, the size of the town. But this will, you know, to Tina's point, we're missing a lot of specialty classrooms. We could be having a tech room, a STEM room. That ultimately, my dream for middle school would be to have those resources. We just don't have the space. Part of the, as part of the cell, I mean, we
Usu- usually, normally, if you're staying on a schedule, every ten years you do some, some sort of either redo of classrooms or addition or whatever that you need to do. And we're, this is over thirty years of this space that's sitting there. Because when we designed that, we designed it for the future of of use because at that point it showed our numbers going up and stuff and obviously the whole state of Vermont, numbers went down. But now things are staying steady here, pretty much steady flow of slight increase. And so that if we can get this space where we can create the other space or get those other kids back into the school instead of out other places, that's obviously gonna save us money.
And not only save us money, but it also gives those kids the opportunity to have full-day preschools. Because we're paying tuition out to other places, but they're not all, they're mostly not all full-day programs. So, you know, some of these students aren't able to ask, that's what we have. So I think that'll be a massive increased access for that. Um, so the next thing we need to do is set a community meeting so that we can have the public kind of come in, show them what we have and hear their ideas and thoughts on the plan. Um, do we want to set this for before our next meeting, our retreat, or after?
Well, I think to be most effective, it'd be nice to have at least an estimate. I mean, and. Nothing against public, I don't think we need to open up a brainstorming of what we should, think the space should be. This is a pretty good layout. Working with the heads, the school leaders that know where we're going, what spaces we need, I think we have a pretty good outline, but we gotta, we have to be able to bring some costs. To them to say, hey, this is, you know, for, especially if we're targeting next March to get this to a vote. Let's try to push these guys to give us some, some basic costs so we can start talking about it, cause some people may say this is way, this is great, but. You show them a number and they're like, no, so. Let's try to maximize our time and the public's time by giving them at least some sort of number that we're looking at.
So given that this is probably something that we'll wanna be working on throughout the year and maybe tie it into one of our goals, maybe can. Try to figure out by our July eleventh meeting retreat. What the estimates are and discuss it from there. So it sounds like a good for everybody.
Yeah, probably. I don't know how many people are gonna show up in the summer, so maybe targeting a meeting in fall to get as many. Many public buy-in as we can, instead of just having a meeting that no one comes to, let's try to really get out there.
The last meeting we had, only one public came, so.
Even, I mean, the September schoolward meeting. We could even have it on the agenda for that because. You know, we're talking budget, but there's not a lot of substance of what's happening within the school in that first. Meeting up, it's like everyone's just getting back and so. There's not a lot of parental involvement in that first meeting back. Maybe this would be something that would. Get people interested and engaged.
So why, why don't we get the estimate and discuss it at our July meeting? And then if we need to, the August meeting, we can figure out higher down the date, whether it's the September meeting or June of time.
Yeah, I think part of the SU meeting, we're, we're gonna, I forgot, blank, the presentation we're gonna put up. We just talked about it last week. Uh, grade point stuff.
Oh.
As another informational thing, maybe if we can be ready to have something in there, like, hey, this is. Coming down the pipe to have that as part of the presentation, just a snippet. Here's a plan, here's a, you know, that gives us till then.
Okay, so we'll continue that especially in July.
Or I think, May and July, I mean, I'm for it, I don't even know what the numbers are, but um. I'd like, you know, to figure out the whole boards behind it, so if we're fighting with each other, then it's not important.
Well. I mean, I, I don't think we have enough information. Um, and on top of that, which I will go over a little bit in the chair report, um. There's going to be some tax issues probably in the twenty-four, twenty-five year. Um, so that would be next year's budget, in that the CLA. Will. We don't know what it'll do, but likely it will go back up. And with it going back up and with the people waiting study at one twenty-seven or whatever it was. Um. That is going to ding us more than we've been deemed before. So the combination of those two things is going to make our budget really difficult. So that's something that we need to kind of keep in mind. When we're planning this. I'd love to do this and I, I don't think there's a right time to do this. I think sooner rather than later is definitely better. But we may struggle with the budget as well, so just kind of let me get everyone that heads up. So I think continuing to discuss it as we know more.
Not a, um, maybe this is the lowest thing, but. Um, so we. So we get to figure, it'd be great if we kind of knew. How that would get broken down, right? It's like. You know, how, how it goes out the bond, what the expectations are as far as like, you know, pennies on the hundred or, or however. Whatever breaks down at someone at their kitchen table, you know, versus like, ah, this is five and a half million, uh, whatever. Yeah, I don't, I don't know what it would be, but you know, just, you know, that versus.
Most of the walls are just sheetrock and suspended ceiling, so it's. It shouldn't be a crazy number.
No.
We can, we can not make it a crazy.
Yeah, just whatever numbers are like digestible for. For someone that's, you know. That doesn't have someone in the school, yeah, it, because that's, that's gonna be the one that. It's gonna wanna.
And, and the other thing too is, I mean. You get this, get this set up, get this passed and do the, do the work. Down the road some other time if there's something else that. Needs to be put in or we wanna do, we can, we can do it that. We really haven't done. Structure-wise, a lot here. Along.
And I, I also just wanna make sure that for the record, that the elevator that we did get voter approval for. For a bond of a hundred eighty thousand dollars, I think it was two years ago. Um, we were not able to use that or go out to bond for that because. We didn't have enough drawings or specifications to gain, to get a bid. Um, so that, that's something that we should keep in mind too, that the voters did approve at least starting this project already. Um, but then we have not been able to start it yet. So I guess, um, by a show of hands from the board, who is in favor of continuing looking into this? Alright, so I think we're all on the same page, just have to get more information. Thank you. Alright, next up is the seventh grade trip. Um, I think. That Colin and Tim had said that they're willing to look into business support, community support.
I mean, I, I brainstormed some with a few. Um, local, like friends and acquaintances, um. And I was, I was trying to get the, the student council to. Try to work together on some things. That never really came to fruition because they never had a meeting since our last meeting. They kind of just, I think, testing and everything else. Sort of took over in a lot of ways, um. Because I, I feel like they should have a, a buy-in to this whole program, um. This year and going forward, and particularly because of five, like, so the student council, I think it's like five, six, right? So like those fifth graders would already be kind of setting the groundwork for their, their uh, participation next year. Um, I mean, the things that I. Did gather from the few that I talked to was like, you know, at least local, smaller local businesses, their philanthropy. Philanthropy budget is slim and, and it's, it could be tapped out ten times over. Yeah, just, just with the number of programs that come in, you know, um. On a, on a weekly basis. Uh, one thing that I did get was like, you know, trying to set up like. I'm with like a match program, you know, so if they, if the kids did put a program together, a plan together. That, you know, say, hey, if we can raise. You know, five thousand, would, would you match two hundred or five hundred, depending on the, you know, capacity of the, of the business, you know. Some local businesses made, match a thousand in a heartbeat and some they only be able to match a hundred, you know, or whatever, but. Um, but it just shows a community effort in that regard, so. Um, so it's a brainstorming phase for me, uh, I don't know. Yeah, my, my wife had mentioned like a basket raffle and some other things that she's had seen. That were like big revenue builders and. It takes a lot of effort, but the, it comes to fruition, it, it. Uh, you, um, get some substance out of it, so, um, so that's kind of where I'm at with that. I'm all ears and willing to pitch in, you know, and what we can do for it, but. Um, but a, as I said, I, I do, I feel like the, the students, um. Can really help move that needle, you know, there's some really great kids and talented kids, whether it's, you know, like one, one. Um, like one of my accounts is like, oh, you know, we do like a summer barbecue, like, you know, if the jazz band, a couple, you know. Few members of the jazz band that, you know, would wanna play, you know, like, that would be. As, as simple as like three talented musicians could, you know, raise funding or money, you know, if they were interested on that or just. Some of the artwork that I've seen come out lately and things like that, so, um. So it was a total brainstorming for me, uh, nothing set in stone, but. You know, definitely good conversations and kind of gave a little clarity on, on opportunities, um. And I, I do think that if we can get some traction with the stakeholders within these programs, whether it's. Um, you know, the seventh grade or the eighth grade program to, to talk to, you know, the hospital and GE and Casella, I mean. These guys are publicly traded companies, you know, they, their philanthropy budgets are more than our local grocery. Outlet or something. So that's what I got.
There's been, in the past, there's been board members that have tried to reach out to the businesses and stuff and. With a little success, but it's like, like what you're saying, the students. I think really that's the key part, to get them involved in it. And let them know what's going on, like, oh, a trip to Washington or a trip anywhere and, and. Let them, uh, do, do the work, get the message out to the, to the people and, and. You know, I mean, but there's nobody out there, a lot of people, there's a lot of businesses that aren't swimming in money. But, you know, especially with the smaller ones and, but it definitely has to start with the kids.
Can I try to look up even, um. Like a Bezos is, like, I looked that up too, but that, I mean. That's like a year out, like, you know, I think, I think it was like. Mid-May, they needed things for like next year's allotment and things like that, yeah. Which is a much bigger ticket item, but like I said, you know, if you don't ask. They're not coming to knock on the door, just hand it out, so. So, yeah, um, so I'm, I'm all ears and if, you know, your parents wanna reach out, to me, I can, I'll do my part, so.
I think we could get some traction, my whole thought around buying is having a budget, like year in, year out, I almost feel like. It could be a. A pitch. Class comes in and I think to piggyback on Abby's thought, I, if we're gonna do this, I wanna make sure that, you know, we're paying for every kid. Every kid, no matter who you are, no matter what you do, is going on a field trip and, and not just limit to seventh grades going here. DC like K through or whatever they are, and they come in and like, we need, I don't know how much DC costs, we need twenty grand next year. And then say, hey, as a board, maybe with Lewis's self, like have a budget, like we got five for you. And I can go out and get five from, from businesses, but you guys gotta come up with ten, but have a plan instead of just. A hail mary at, at the end of the year of like, will you guys cover it next year? And then kind of. Grow this out year over year, so they kind of feel like walking into the meeting, they know that they have a budget that we're gonna at least. Accept, and then from there, the, the businesses is, certainly we're gonna have businesses that'll give more in one year than others. Sickle business, they, they may have kids in the class, it's a lot easier, um, but it allows us to maybe take a look at some bigger things. But when you go after the Casellas or the, the Amazons, there's also big projects we might need, we might need to big, build a STEM or tech room that I don't wanna burn. Five thousand dollar grant that we could get a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant for, so I think. At this time of year, it'd be great for every class to come in and have like a wish list, so like, here's what I, here's what I want for. Field trips or the big trip, this is what we need and we can sit around and say, okay, this is what we can either, A, we had some surplus or B, we got a budget for. And then we can go out and I know we can get community involvement and show them what we're doing, um. So I know the kids have to get involved, it's a big ask for, for kids to, to do that, but when I say kids, it should be their parents coming in. And working for the whole class, not just for your kid to go somewhere, but to make sure that every single student in that class gets to go. And, and we, we definitely have the community support to do that, but it'll give the community a little bit more of a sense of. Year in, year out, knowing what we need and how to get there versus just. Hey, we did well this year, let's, let's dole it out, let's get on a consistent basis of. This is part of the educational process around town while you're here, is this is all experience you get by going out and doing these things and it's covered no matter who you are.
Yeah, I mean, that's why I, that's on the internal side, that's why it felt like the, um, student council is such an important sort of avenue because. One, they already have the, the teacher mentors that are working with them, you know, so they, they're the adult in the room, they kind of, kind of help steer them, you know, in some ways. And, and those kids are chosen by their peers, cause they, they vote for. Their ambassadors and stuff, but then they pass to, to represent them, so. Um, so then you have, you know, a smaller breadth of kids that are kind of leading that charge, so. Um, and I know that, I mean, they've put together. Uh, dances and different things like that, so this is just an opportunity that I'm gonna kind of branch a little further, so.
I think the seventh grade this year, um, specifically was asking for help. The seventh grade for next year, um, because they're trying to re-establish this trip. Um, and it used to be a lot less, so I, I think that that's part of it. I think fundraising's been very difficult over the last few years with COVID. Um, and I do agree that I, I would love the student council and, you know, the students to take a little bit more. Um. Buy-in, as you say, or, you know, or actually. Trying to. Get some funds for the school and, and help with the fundraisers, um, but, and what's been ending up happening is over the last. Five years at least, um, it's only seventh and eighth grade that have these big trips and. It's like this, not. The same few people do all the fundraising. Um, but everybody goes. And it's partially because of maybe, you know, people don't have the time, um. Um, maybe they don't desire to, you know, do that, they'd rather, you know, pay, or some of them don't have the funds to pay and. It, but some people are really getting burnt out as well.
I also think, Colin, you brought up a great point last time when you said. They might not even have the capacity, like the family or, you know, or. You know, the network that some of the other families, so yes, they probably wanna help fundraise, but they don't know where to go. You know, or their neighborhood might not be safe enough, or they don't have family around here, right? Um, so I think we have to look into that too, so it could just be a capacity thing, why.
Yeah, I mean, fundraising, like selling cookies, you're selling money to buddies.
Thank you.
Or I'm buying a million of them for my kid.
Yeah, absolutely.
Fundraising, it's tapping people you know for money, um.
Seriously.
They don't need the cookies.
Yeah, so it's. Um, and Chris, was there, I, I thought there was talk that there were some funds for this. Field trips or something?
So, uh, excuse me, there, there will be discussion at the SU level, uh, regard to. Whether or not we wanted to use, uh, S R funds, um, you know, so like every school gets X amount of. Dollars that can be used towards experiential learning, uh, you know, cause I know that. As we look at positions that we initially had earmarked using S R funds that, that remain unfilled, so we will have some surplus funds. And we'd rather see that money go back to kids, experiential learning programs like this. The only thing that we would discuss with, with boards is as you set that precedent is, you know, do you maintain that? So if. We, you know, like say every school got, let's say five thousand dollars, um. Would then every district or a school be committed to then maintaining that for Rutland Town, might be one school, district puts like Corey Valley. Looking at say forty, fifty thousand dollars. You know, do they wanna add that to their budget? That's just more of our priorities, so, you know, we could look at doing that. Uh, but that will be a discussion that, uh, will be up on the SU. And I'm gonna talk to Louis about this and as well as Lisa Madison, the building administrators, and they're excited about that. I think the hardest part would be. Just how to best utilize those funds, because everybody will, will have an idea, like you said, about that wishlist, but it's just, it could be used towards. Something like this. And five, and five thousand was just a number, so don't, that's, don't quote me on that.
I mean, I mean, I mean, it's kind of like a passion of mine and maybe that's what drives it and like, having. What makes Rutland Town Rutland Town is like these experiences and I, you know, create a subcommittee where maybe like we're gonna, it's a lot to ask teachers to keep doing this stuff. Or to dump it on Louis or, or the admin when there's a lot of things, we're gonna go up to a tough budget, but like. It's gotta, someone's gotta be behind the passion of like, this is what we wanna have here. And that's what's gonna get the money and if we can get some S R funds and we get some wish lists put together. You know, we can have some momentum each year. I'd be happy to head that up to work with each class, cause again, there's only so many hours in a day and to then go ask. This, this is a very big part of education, it's also a very small part of the time invested in the school year to say, hey, let's talk about this for. And easy, but I'd be happy to take that on. Tim wants to help, um, I saw him on the bus last time, but, uh, just to try to get some, some momentum, not to discount, we're gonna talk about seventh grade, which I will happen to. But I think if we can get some sort of framework and someone championing it. Some momentum, not to discount, we're gonna talk about seventh grade, which I will happen to, but I think if we can get some sort of framework and someone championing it. That isn't, you know, Chris, there's a lot of things on everyone's plate, this will fall by the wayside versus us being, say, hey, this is something Rutland Town's gonna do. And hopefully, while I'm on the board and while I'm not on the board, someone can champion it, looking forward, so happy to continue. Building momentum towards this. With, you know, with almost the framework of it's like every kid, every day, I want every kid to be able to go have this experience, so however we can figure that out as a community, we'll get there.
Well, it sounds like right now they're not sure they're going to be doing this seventh grade trip. So I I feel like if they had next year. Yeah, they it it sounds like that not everyone is able to pay for it, it's very expensive, so it just sounds like the momentum has slowed down. I'm not sure, they were, I suppose that they were supposed to have a meeting about it, they canceled it. Um, so I I don't know, I I believe they want to have it, but I think the cost is very high compared to what it used to be.
We we got that thing in our pocket about that was gonna be sixteen. You know, almost a little over sixteen thousand, sorry, to go.
Right, four fifty per student.
Is that something in that leftover money that we could for this first year, so that they could?
I I think that we could do that, um I think then the question is. If we do that and then we end up getting money from um S R later. Then we put that for the eighth grade trip. Yeah, something like that. Um, or we could give half of it, so that it's more in line with what parents were able to fundraise and pay for before. And that would probably make it more doable. It's different options.
Because like, I mean, the biggest catch is like a deposit, I guess, they they need to put a deposit down on there.
And to be honest, I I feel like I I'm not gonna vote on this because I. So I think it would have to.
The only thing, the only difference between this field trip and the eighth grade is that they have time to fundraise, because isn't this.
Everyone has time to fundraise, the problem is with COVID, that took out a lot of time, so that for plus money in the class accounts. And there hasn't been this. Idea in the school that you should start fundraising now in kindergarten, so that in seventh and eighth grade, you get these fun trips.
Yeah.
So.
I just meant that this, the seventh grade trip is early in the.
Oh, yeah, since September.
Yeah, so.
No time to.
There is no time to fundraise from when they decided and haven't made the decision. At least the seventh graders now have started fundraising for next year's eighth grade trip, yes, um, you know.
And it's hard to fundraise for two trips in two.
In two years, you know.
It's difficult, and I also think that they just got word in the spring that they could go back to Chindra Cook.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, that there was even that possibility, because it had been closed due to COVID. So I think that's one of the reasons that it would be, it would be nice if we were able to help them out, but at the same time, I have a seventh grader, so.
Okay, what's the total they gotta have?
Um, so they, in order for everybody to go and not pay a dime, it says sixteen thousand three seventy-five. They used to pay close to two fifty per student. Which is two hundred dollars less than what it's gonna cost. It's four fifty per student or sixteen thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars.
And that's for the fifteen hundred dollars of busing too.
That's including costs.
Yeah.
I, my oldest was able to do Chindra Cook and it really was a great experience for her. Um, she, she had a, it it was good socially, emotionally, it really did, I think, help with bringing students together. And seeing each other in a different light.
I'd like to make the motion to favor the whole trip.
Out of the excess money. Okay, thank you, John. Any more discussion?
This is for the fall.
So we would, it would be making leftover funds from this year.
Tina, can I just?
Yes.
Uh, would we be setting a precedent and that we be paying? Each year for this trip, but I'm not necessarily saying I'm opposed to, I just want to make sure that we're just, if we pay for it all this year, then. Will that be moving forward, then that would be the expectation is that we, this trip would be a hundred percent funded in this, no, I just want.
I I know that, I know that the board was planning to discuss adding field trips to the. Um, budget, but I don't know.
Well, my thought sitting here is I wonder if, like. We paid for the seventh grade trip, we're all seventh graders. And then they only had to worry about fundraising for their eighth grade trip, you know, like taking one off the table, um. It might be easier for families. Sitting here thinking about like a wonder.
We go into budgeting and start working that, it's, you know, that is something we would have to budget in. So we're not necessarily just always surplus funds, because there'll be some years we're not having surplus funds, so.
So like, they could start seventh grade.
Or even sixth grade or.
Fundraising. Or even.
Yeah, start fundraising DC trip and.
Yeah.
Sixth grade.
Which is twice as expensive, really. Uh, and I do think that that makes it easier too, because it's really hard having seventh graders. Or, you know, if two classes fundraising for the same thing, it's very difficult for families to always give.
Do we know what we? What do we, did we? How much do we give for DC this year?
We didn't give anything. There's probably, last year, we had some S R funds, right?
The past.
Past few.
Couple of years during COVID when fundraising was limited or shut down altogether, the board had agreed to. Uh, contribute some money to help offset the cost, I just understand that it's gonna fundraise.
But did any S R funds go to this year?
No.
Were they all on their own?
That's, I believe so, yes. Yeah, we didn't allocate S R funds this year, so I know that's in our schools.
So you guys fundraised for the previous year, right?
Um, yes.
So part of my discussion would be, I mean, okay, so there, we have. We're trying to create momentum into what I just talked about, we're also walking into this particular class. Walking into the two most expensive trips and we're gonna pay for one of them. On the backs of them going into eighth grade for the even bigger, more expensive trip when we're trying to ramp this up, so in an effort to. Equalize and not set precedent. You know, I I'd like this to be considered as as kind of a forepay for their seventh and eighth grade trips, because that way we can spread it out. I don't want to be in a situation next year where we created a committee and things have changed and this particular class gets. Thirty thousand dollars when we're looking at the rest of the school, it's gotten zero, does that make sense? Not present clue.
Well, if they are adding it into the budget, then everyone else is going to be. Getting it later.
But this year, we're just borrowing from surplus, we're not adding to the budget, right, so, just to be clear, I'm I'm doing this is to pay it forward. That I don't want to, you know, it needs to be equalized out, because we're really. Publicly looking, targeting three out of five members, kids, which is not my goal, but that's that's how it's going to be perceived, so that's how I'm going to. Carry this forward. That's why I said what I said before, we even got here, I didn't even know the numbers, but. Just to have that up there.
It's a time, it's a timeframe. And we're booking any or.
Sure.
Could, can you feasibly put that second team brand in the budget for the seventh grade, I mean, or whatever? Can you put that in the budget for next?
Not next year, um.
We already passed the budget.
We can, but we have to find where we're going, where.
Or you just add.
Or you just add, yeah. If you, if you feel that, not you specifically, but if we feel as a board that field trips and experiential learning are really important. Then yes, we can be talking about adding it to the budget, finding where we can cut or where we just need to add, because we need to do everything. In other categories, it's hard.
Where does the part like, um. Like the school dancing and things like that, that that that's in sixth grade or like. Where is this coffers, that they don't go anything to anything in particular, except for building towards field trips, even, is that right, Emma?
I think that they go towards um help graduation outfits. Uh, or, you know, robes. I don't. I don't know where else they go, I I mean, most of the time, the dances are sponsored by an organization. So it's either a fundraiser for a class or it's for the P T O. And the P T O gives back to the teachers and the school with assemblies and things like that.
And that a lot of times with the dances, what they take in is barely enough to cover the DJ.
Uh, that's just, that's just an experience in itself.
Yeah. The dance doesn't usually be. So we have a motion on the table. And three, I think three of us are abstaining. Any more discussion?
Is it, what's, what are the, what's the motion?
The motion was to completely cover it due to the fact that it's in September.
With surplus funds not adding to the budget, just be very clear and pointed, um.
With surplus funds, which some of which haven't been spent due to. I think he had said that there were some S R, uh subs, subs, different classes, but. There were some S R positions that weren't filled, things like that, we don't always have.
Not going to be in a public financial debate here of like, and not every year there's surplus, there's deficits, doesn't mean we're running in the black or the red, but just carryovers, there's lots of things, but. Um.
And the money that carries over helps our budget planning for next year too, so you can, what we're carrying over will be. Sixteen thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars less if we choose to spend this money. So I don't hear any more discussion.
I I would just say, I mean, so like Colin was saying, this is like, would you say like a move it forward sort of philosophy this?
Yeah.
Because like, I guess when, when, like my, my thinking. At this particular moment in time, yeah, certainly change, but like as we talk about budget season next year. I'd love to see like, so everything but the eighth grade, maybe, yeah, because. Because that eighth grade is thirty-five thousand, you know, thirty-five thousand and seventh grade to pre-K. At least on the sheet is twenty-five thousand, right? So like as far as expenses, so we can, you know, commit all the way to that point, then. You know, I feel like, you know, that. Um, DC trip is really like the milestone, right? But you know, from fifth grade on, that that that's what you're running for, you know, so and all these other trips, you know, that. All this others, the Jazz Festival, the, you know, Green Mountain Climbing, you know, these other like, you know, Mont Charming. If that's, if we can get all that squared away, then the one focal point for fundraising for field trips for. The parents and the students will be DC, right?
Correct, and just to point out as well, the seventh graders last year did pay a hundred fifteen towards the Rock climbing, so they did pay something. So i- if I were to add anything, I would, I would prefer giving a good portion of it, but not all of it. Um, if I were going to be voting, because I do think that families.
You know, if you did, yeah.
Can put something in, um, they they used to pay two fifty, over the last couple of years, they've been paying one fifteen and. And then it's absorbed in the. Um, principles, I think discretionary funds for students that can, I believe it's, sorry. As done in the past.
I believe so.
There there are some funds somewhere else in the budget that helps for students that can.
So even ten thousand, and then it said there's forty kids and the other fourth, four to five thousand would be.
Sure, well, C three aren't voting, you have to put out to pay for it all, I'll call a vote, I'm voting yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we should move forward, thank you, Jeff and Colin. All right, so next up is um a little bit further exploration of field trips, experiential learning and course offerings. Um, this is on the agenda to kind of talk about field trips and how we're feeling about. Working those into the budget as well as other experiential learning such as technology classes, um. STEM, STEM classes, uh, you know, we, right now, we only teach Spanish. You know, are there thoughts about other languages or offering other introductions to languages, things like that?
I think it would be, it's important, um, I think we're missing that nowadays with kids, that technology. Like we're working and all that, the only problem is, is. Finding people, I mean, we can have a hard time finding teachers for math, social studies, English, and, you know, um, you know, I just. I don't know where you're, where.
I think it would be pretty good to maintain what we have.
Yeah, I mean.
But I I. When I see this, I think more of a philosophical discussion, I think, um, where the, you know, I think Colin and I started that discussion about where. Envision the school going and how do we start to build that and progress towards that, not to say that it's going to be. Year one, but if we can say five years down the road, where do you want to be and how do we, you know, get there incrementally, um, but, you know, they obviously filters, but look at. Growing programs, you know, look at the second floor space, how that allows us to expand and grow, you know, offerings for our students. I think that's more of a a discussion that begins to prioritize, you know, but budgetary items, just we're looking at budgeting, there's. Certain things, it's not a top priority or that, you know, you know, these experiences, these these trips have become our priority, so we want to make sure we. We shift to reallocate funds towards that and. Uh, you know, I mean, you're correct, I mean, I think whenever you, you know, it's just with the state, when they give it, here's a bunch of money, it's it's great, but we're gonna find someone to. To do this, there's there are limited resources, um, but I don't necessarily want that to be a kind of a hindrance to a discussion. In terms of where, you know, the the board and where Sarah and where the staff really feel that, you know, um. Like to see it grow, I think that's one of the main crux of our strategic plan is to see. How we continue to grow the offerings for our for our students and the programming for our students and provide them with the best education experiences. Possible, which I think that's, uh, I I look at really is more, is what I saw, that's what I talked to teams about as well, is more that philosophical. That we you had already started to have in the prior during the seventh grade. And how do we start to kind of continue to move that forward and what that looks like, because we, you know, we sit down, we look at budgeting, we keep that in the back of our minds and. Uh, if there is a need for, you know, like I said, expand a foreign language that's, you know, we take a look at, well, will that look like, how how could we offer that and. Um, you know, because you say to find a French teacher, it sounds great, but, you know, I mean. If we're saying the summer scholar, it might be a little bit easier than than here, but that doesn't mean that's, we can't find other ways to do that as well, so.
And if you don't look, you won't find either.
Sure.
Potentially, I mean, something that can be really long-term vision, I mean, past life and hiring practices of. The next hire, we're gonna have, you know, dual lingual requirements, but you can't change what's in place right now and then kick someone out and then. Or a French teacher, when we have three kids that want to take French, but moving forward, say, hey, we're gonna hire on only people that can speak multiple languages, that's why they. Or and certified in it, that way they can, they can teach to what needs are, but it's to one-off, say, hey, let's bring, I mean, I'd love to have Russian Mandarin. But, or or can we implement remote technologies, alternatives, um.
With another classroom space, I could, I would give offers of those, you know, remote learning.
I think that's part of the sell, like we need the space to be able to see the, see the future, um, and and sadly, it's gonna be more AI driven, which is good for the budget. Personnel is always gonna be costly as well as finding the people.
Um, I, that just reminded me.
Goal setting.
I also received a letter from a friend speaking for two. Um, for two, two families. Um, she said that, um, that these families are interested in helping the school start a ski program at Pyco. Um, but their kids are very lucky that they ski and, um, they're able to teach them, but they wish their classmates were able to have the same opportunity. Many families are not able to afford to pay for lessons, teach their children ski and don't know how to themselves. It's a great experience for kids to learn a new skill while being outside and exercising, especially in the winter. We are so close to to the resort that logistically it makes sense, um, she was able to discuss this idea with. Mr. Rome today, and he thinks it's a great idea that would supplement the students PE education, although it may be too late to implement it for next school year. Um, but they wanted to ask if we could consider looking into it in the future. And Sarah Tetslav is not here today, um, this letter was shared with her, but. Um, she said that at her kid's school in Orwell, they've had success bringing this program. Um, to them that she'd be very excited about helping to start it here. So that's an example of experiential learning, um, that we don't currently offer. That I believe throughout town used to have some type of a life sports. Um, in the winter where Friday afternoons or some, some day of the week, they would have. Yeah, they would have different opportunities, whether it's cross-country skiing, downhill skiing, um, bowling, rock climbing, things like that. Um, so those are some ideas that to think about, thinking about this type of.
I could talk about this forever, um, I think getting the temperature, you know, I grew up with lifetime sports. And and working with Pyco in the mountain is part of the element of using the budget. But I'm not a hundred percent familiarity with like, does this? How how specialized can we be around town versus the whole LSU at large? I know we're always fighting for class time minutes, this, that, this teacher time. I I would fight for this program forever, uh, but I want to make sure I'm in the right framework and. Is it, is it, is it an uphill battle or is it something that we can't introduce? Cuz I know it's, other schools are doing it, but they're not necessarily in our supervisory bubble. How do we get there without, I could literally talk about. I mean, I think that these are good discussions at the SU, but I think we also have to understand that we. We don't have to move in lockstep with one another, that's if we're, our goal is to increase. You know, experiential learning programming for our students, what that may look like in one school may, may look a little bit different than another school, and I know that. Wells in the past has done participated in the junior ski program at Bromley. Uh, I know Middleton Springs, uh, I I I think they did go to Pyco, but.
Holtney.
You know.
Pyco this year.
Right, so there are other schools that participate in these programs. And so, uh, I think it's more, uh, you know, there's sometimes that notion of. Just because one school does, we all have to do it, or if if one school can't do it, then nobody can do it, and I think we will have to look at. What we want to provide for our students and, like I said, what it looks like around town may look a little bit different with Donna Wells or Holtney or Proctor. And that's okay, you know, but we're still providing these programs or experiences for our, for our students. So, and you know, this is really offered to all of schools, I mean, they they they're trying to get more, I mean, you know, this. Ski resorts need to try to grow, uh, this cuz they understand that right now, it's just, it's, they're seeing a steady decline of, or of Mounters. Um, you know, and so they're just, they're trying to grow this and I'm. Uh, so I I, I think more it's just for some people, it's just that doesn't cross their radar cuz it does cost a lot. You know, to go skate all day, so this is a good program, just put.
And the nice thing about the program is the students that participate get a work ticket or. So they're able to go on the weekends and at other times as well, you know.
Right.
Or with friends.
I mean, I have, I mean, if we want, we could go at the, the whole social emotional learning piece of it. I mean, building, you know, the. Just the relationship with community members, um, I mean, there's a, we could do, I'll be on with. Um, um, but I also think we need to look at what we're doing here already and seeing how we can expand it, I mean. The one class that Ren talks about all the time is tech ed. And what they're doing in tech ed, and if we can expand that even to the younger grades, like getting, even if it's once a month, you know, like. You know.
I think we'll be talking about that.
Oh, okay, I was just like, those kind of, those kind of things that we have already. You know, how do we expand that to a wider, instead of waiting till sixth grade, seventh grade to do it? How do we get some of the younger kids that, you know, those kind of opportunities, even if it's fourth, you know, fourth and eighth. Um, we have, there's a lot we do here already, just how do we expand it?
Other things for goal setting.
Yeah, I I think that we can discuss this a little bit more, maybe at our calls.
Yeah, and I do know schools are looking to bring back these sports for life.
Yeah.
Program, uh, there has been talk in other, uh, JRCC schools.
So.
Everything is.
Who do we, yeah, who do we talk to about that to find out more costs or who, who would know those sorts of things?
Around this, uh, Pyco program?
Yeah.
Uh, uh, you know, there's a, um, Wells Springs Board Member, I could talk to George Twilight. Uh, he works in Killington, so he might have more information.
And it sounds, it sounds like Abby. Where she works too, so she might be able to.
Yes, okay, perfect.
So she just, yeah, if you could bring that from me, it's gotta be good for our discussion, just start thinking about budget for next year and also making better calls. For retreat. Does that work for everyone?
Yeah, I might, my fear is that like, it's been talked about for many years, and it's been missing for many years, so like, I don't know the. Obstacles to get back there, money's easy, just go to the side. I can't get on the phone tomorrow, I'll tell you what it's gonna cost for a student, but also what do we want entails it? Are we just trying to get kids to the mountain, or is there cross-country skiing, I mean, it's not a one-size-fits-all, lifetime sports for us was. Not every kid wins, but no, certainly Pyco was a big part of, that's where I went, but a lot of kids tenant, there's. What do we want the program to look like, what are the obstacles to get there from a school perspective and 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 an SCU and and I'm like. Cuz like, I'm on Grand C L vision, I'm ready to go.
Who do we want to participate in too? Is it the whole school, is it just, you know, what are the?
I think, I think a lot of that is going to be based on the supervision. Teachers, to make sure the teachers are involved in this. And maybe in the discussions, cuz that's how it kind of went away one time is. You know, we had a. Staff that was tired of all that stuff.
Yeah.
And so I kind of went, that was a lot of it went away.
Yeah, Sarah said that, um, with community support, the Oral Well Booster Club brought the program at Orwell Village School six years ago. It was and is a ton of work. The transportation to and from Pyco and the cost of ski clothes, mittens, skaters, socks, goggles, et cetera, it's the most expensive. Um, but she, she did say it's wonderful.
But it's also how big Orwell.
Orwell's tiny, but it's also further away.
I'm saying here, like. I don't know the demographic of the teacher, like in my heyday, most of the teachers skied, so it was. It was like the Jeff's point, a- and and things have changed from when I grew up to now as far as supervision volunteers, but. Let's get those hurdles out of the way, we have plenty of parents that would jump in on this and and help teach and be there. With a lot of free time on, whether it's Friday afternoon, Wednesday afternoon, there's a lot of active parents that would be involved, but again, those are hurdles too that of like. You have to go through a whole bunch of steps, you can't just show up and start teaching kids, but also it's cost savings to not have to lean on the mountain to say, hey. We want free passes, we want gear, we want, yeah, um. Teachers, we want all this, like, here's, we gotta have.
I know when they, when they would go to Pyco, there was swimming, cross country and and downhill all at once.
Yeah.
Well, that was. Most, a lot of the kids went that way.
But we had some climate change and Pyco's open, but Pyco's open later and later, we have mountaintop to look at, I mean. I mean, I'd love to jumpstart this too, cuz I think. It's, it's, I'll certainly in my circle, that's like what what happened to it, where to go, but how do we get back there, I don't think it's as easy as I think, like, let's do it. We're just getting some costs like.
So I think we need to know more about costs and what we need to be for it. So you, you can raise some. We'll talk about it.
I'll be prepared for July then, for this cost and everything, at least on the ski aspect, I don't know.
Oh, I can give you all that. Alright, so we'll move on. Um, under new business, we had a request from a community member to discuss making a dog park in it at. Uh, our land in Wood Park. Uh, we own part of the land, I think originally. Purchased the land years ago as a site for a potential high school. Which obviously hasn't come to fruition, I'm not sure ever will, um, but at the same time. Um, it is our land.
Our school owns parts of the land that we own on the woodlot over in West Roll. Up by the mountain, it's different. Parts of the. School that we have owned for, for years and years and years. And we slowly have given some of it away. The the town or other things, but anyways, that kind of.
So, um, this community member had asked us to consider. Uh, when you, I believe the area that she was looking at was when you come into the park along the drive. And you look to the right of the transfer station, there's a big softball field.
Mm-hmm.
Below the softball field is a field, it's right now part of the disc ball. Um, our idea was to turn that into a dog park. Um, I discussed this a little bit with Chris when we got it and. If the property is not going to be used for school activities, we can't say yes. Um, is what I kind of got the gist of it, so then that opens up, well, then what? You know, if we can't use that for anything other than school activities, what are the other options? And Chris had, um, spoken with our lawyer as well about what the options are, and I think he went over three.
There are three, potentially four different options, given a review of them.
If you don't mind.
Sure, I know, uh, when I spoke to attorney, uh, he did state that, um, one, we should. Not allow a dog park on land cuz of the liability that anything happens, you know, uh, it's solely responsible as the landlord, which is us. Uh, so, uh, his suggestion was, one, uh. Land is, it's a real asset, it's it's value, it's it's, you know, the property, I mean, two. He advised not to gift that, uh, you know, away, but if the board. Uh, felt that that was the right thing to do, um, all these options will have to go before, obviously, the public vote in March. Uh, so if the board wanted to gift the land, they'd have to then decide how much they wanted to gift. Uh, you know, so like, let's say five acres or, you know, an acre or whatever it may be, but that would still have to be put up for a public vote. Uh, the town would have to vote as to whether or not they approve of that. The other option would obviously be to sell a certain part of that to the, um, uh, to the town. At a fair market value, um, and so, uh, but that would also have to be publicly voted on, uh, if there. The third would be a, um, uh, a long-term lease. That is probably the most, that he'd lose the most difficult because of the fact that, you know, you have to, you have like, uh, you have to make sure that's, um. Uh, you know, there's language in the, the lease that's, you know. Basically says, hey, we're not responsible for anything occurs, you know, on this, and you know, he had. Suggested he'd work on that, you know, language with us, if that's what we wanted to do, uh, but you would lease that to the. Town, but you still, oh, you still had, you know, still owned the land, so it wasn't like you're giving away, you're still, you still own it, but you're just leasing it out. But, uh, we have to be very careful with the wording that, uh, if anything were to occur happen, that, uh, you know. This board and would not be responsible for any of those acts or anything, it's no options. Uh, the last option that he was just a land swap, uh, that he said that if. The towns they had, you know, if we gave up five acres, if they had five acres adjacent to, say, on the southern end of our property or somewhere else. That we could say, well, we'll give you that land, then we'll just, you know, if you want to give us land there, so. Um, those are options or, you know, but, uh, he felt strongly, but it's up to the board. Said, definitely, as we're going through, you know, tough times budgeting, that since we have something of real, it's an asset of real value. Uh, that he advised the board not to just give, uh, give it away, um, because it's just. It's a value there, so, but that's the board decision, so.
So out of the four actions that you mentioned, what was his number one?
I I don't, I I think the lease was probably his, uh, you know, the, the, the lease and the gifting were. Probably the last two, I really think ideally he would look at, you know, either swapping of the land. Uh, because that way then I would get what they would. Would want, uh, you know, particularly if it's a, it's probably just the dog park and, you know, the. Uh, the board may say, okay, we're not gonna really, we're not gonna do anything with that land, but we might say that there's. You know, another property, like I said, on another, you know, southern end of, you know, our, our lot that we might. Want to do something with or have an eyes for, so you could, you know, perform a land swap, or if there's, you know, land somewhere else, that's, you know, a, a value, that's. Uh, he thought the land swap would probably be the best, but all these have to be voted on by the, the town, uh, by the rest of the town, I mean. So, yeah, during March, so. I missed the town connection, I thought you said like, there's a person looking, like the town's interested in building a dog park?
No, there's a person that, uh, went to the, the town select board. And the select board informed them that the school owns the land that they were talking about. So then she wrote a letter to me, and it got put in my mailbox over there that I didn't know I had. Um, but luckily I happened to come, I happened to walk in right after she had been here, I guess, and they said, oh, you just got mail. So I found out I had a mailbox. Um, and but she didn't, we played phone tag for about two weeks or so. Um, and she was going to come to the meeting tonight, but she's not feeling well. Um, so I told her, I let her know what came of the meeting, but. Uh, basically, a few things that she said was, one. Um, it, she's a senior citizen and a lot of her. Um, friends are also senior citizens and their dogs are kind of like their family, um, and they are able to walk their dogs. As well, or as much as the dogs need exercise, um, just due to their health. So having a safe place for the dogs to get some exercise and run off leash, um, it's very beneficial to them and it makes. Um. It makes everyone happy, the dogs and the owners. Um, plus it's social for the owners, um, and gives them someone to talk to while their dog's exercising. Um, a second thing that she had mentioned was, um, she gave lots of different. Ways to word the liability signs that you put there. Um, but speaking with our lawyer, it, it doesn't matter because we, if it's not a school activity, we can't.
I'm with it, so but the town just basically threw it on your desk, is that where we're at?
Yes.
Okay. We're not in the business. Like if the tower, that's what Chris had said, if the tower were entrusted in undertaking this, then these are the options for that, but. I would, right, I would, I would highly be in favor of selling the town, that plot, not swapping. So we could take that funds and use it for future activities and field trips and sell the property, we're not in the business of owning real estate. Long term, that's good, and if the town's interested in working with their. My, at least my vote, I'm happy to sell them the land, not gift it, I'm also steward of. You know, I'm not, we're not in the business of giving away land that's not on the tax dole, to me, not on the tax dole either, there's gotta be some sort of financial gain for the taxpayer in this. Which could be money, um, and they could build the dog park, but I feel like that's town business, not school business. But I'd be happy to, if that's, if that's a good plot, we don't. So I would let her know that, and then let the town. I'd assume they have to go through some sort of ordinance process with the town about dogs and whatnot, so, but if that's the spot, they want it. Market value sounds good to me, and I tell you the tax.
Fences or wherever, if we sell it to the town, they gotta do all this work, all of our, our tax dollars. To build this dog park, so this.
I I don't know for sure how interested that town is either, but we can't have it on our land anyway.
Yeah. Well, so we'll set up like crossing the task force.
Yeah.
Who was task force, town or us?
I'm not, I really don't think.
Uh, see, look at that, I don't believe we own the task force, but. But the fields about that.
I I'm not sure exactly where. I I.
The town, the town should want it, they should have a dog park next to the.
I I would like to see the. What the property land is and what we actually.
Yeah.
Own over there.
It's gotta be over town office.
I'd assume those all town land. Town parks and rec, but it.
And then maybe talking to the. Select board about what their interest would be, not making any decisions, just having that conversation. I would be amenable to that, but I'm not, I'm amenable to saying, yes, I definitely want to sell it right, right now, cuz I don't have that information.
Yeah, I just, I'm not just not in favor of giving it to the town for a dollar, like we sold town hall and everything else. That belonged to the school for like a dollar, that.
Oh, no.
That's not gonna happen. That's not gonna happen, my opinion.
So, um, I would entertain a motion to. Discuss this further after getting more information. Or whatever the board would like to. I, I would like a, a motion as to what to do about this at this point, whether it's to discuss this further after getting more information or.
I would think the, the board would probably want to know if the. Tower were interested in this, first of all, because if tower interests, then I think that would be for discussion counts as no, then I think it's. Should pretty much be, uh, done, that deal for us.
So when we do that by attending their meeting or sending.
If you could just ask. Your petition with the select board, have them bring it up. I mean, whether it's dog park or not, if it's just like a. Chunk of land we own in the middle of like town property, maybe they want it for something else. And I say that to me, but like us, maybe we want to use it for that rec facility, get it off the town, school books, so.
So I believe they meet the same nights we do, right?
Yes.
And they also meet the fourth Tuesday?
It was the second, uh, it's the second and fourth.
I, I might, I will be traveling and I also have a P T L meeting, virtual meeting. That Tuesday night, so would anyone else be interested in? Um, speaking to the select board and finding out their interest on this matter.
I will.
Thank you. And before that, uh, I'll try to get the, what the land is that. We actually own over there. I'll try to get that so we can, I'll pass it out.
Yeah.
And then you can report it for July meeting.
Sold for a million dollars. Tiny commission.
Um, next discussion is staffing for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Um, there's two things I want to mention with this one, uh, the first one is, um, Sarah had let me know. That the kindergarten class is starting to show higher enrollment, um, than in the past, so it's something that she would like us to consider. Um, not necessarily tonight, but just as summer goes on, if the numbers continue to increase, would be. To, um, add a kindergarten para position, which we have done in the past. They currently have one that they share between the two classrooms. Uh, but having two, one for each classroom would. They think really help to give the students what they need, you know, especially with. The needs that they are seeing entering. The school. So, that was basically no, no action needed on that tonight, just something to think about, yeah. Um, so.
What is there kept for?
She's not with us tonight, so I don't have the exact numbers, but I want to.
Is she, there's thirty-six right now enrolled, but what's that?
So our policy states, uh, from K to three, it's twenty students.
Oh, twenty.
Right, and then four to twelve is twenty-four.
And I know that when my son was saying kindergarten, I remember twenty-two students at the beginning of the year, I think. And it, it was really.
Oh, absolutely, that's why I just looked at this, I was like, oh, that's eighteen already in each class.
Usually they get more students over the summer when, you know, people move into the area and after. Right.
Or they find a five-year-old in house.
Yeah, exactly, oh my gosh, you are five. Um, so that's definitely something that, um, she'll update us as the summer goes on, but something to think about for. Probably our August meeting or July meeting. Um, the second one is, we were talking about technology, um, earlier and. Um. Basically, one of the things that, um, I think as time has gone on is technology has increased exponentially from. Ten years ago, um, and there's not. Enough manpower in the school, um, to really help the kids. Get as big of a, in, you know, get as much information as possible that could be helpful for them for their. Schooling, for their future, um, for their creativity, et cetera, um, and. We were, I was on a, uh, hiring committee and. For this library and technology, uh, position and it just. It, it started some wheels turning about how, um, great it would be to have. More technology at the school to, and the other teachers in the committee agreed that they wished that they had. Uh, more access to bring technology to their classroom and know, you know, learn new technology, how to use it in the classroom. As well as introduce kids to, uh, maybe some coding, some. Intro to artificial intelligence, um, how to build a website. Lots of different opportunities and. Having someone that's. Having someone devoted to that subject. Would be great and something that I think would really be an asset to the school. Uh, so I just wanted to bring it up for discussion. Uh, as a potential add-on for next year, I, I spoke with Lewis. About how to fund this position and. He said that there are some extra S R funds that we could use for next year to incorporate a technology. Uh, integrationist or whatever we want to call it, we, Rutland Town used to have one. Several years ago, and what they would do is they would come into the classroom and, um, teach lessons. And they'd also help teachers bring technology into their lessons. Um, I was thinking of this more helping with social media, um. Do's and don'ts about it, and then some of those other subjects I was mentioning earlier. The reason that we would use S R for next year would be, we could. Potentially budget for it the year after. I think I covered most of points.
Correct, if you're going to use S R funds for this, uh, then you would have to discuss adding this position to the budgets. For example, and the one thing, uh, I know you'd mentioned the potential of a kindergarten para. That would, um, would not. Pay for that out of S R funds, that would just be in addition to, it's an unbudgeted item that would have to be discussed, but.
Um, the other part of the tech position that I thought would be helpful for the kids as well was learning some keyboarding skills. Um, because a lot of kids, they don't get the typing or, um, the keyboarding instruction. Whereas when there wasn't technology interventionist. They were teaching keyboarding without tears and other things to help to get proper hand format, our. Proper hand position when they're using the computer, which helped them to be more efficient and, um. It's better at it. Also robotics was something that was thought of that's. I wish Sarah were here tonight because I don't know if the other seventh grade. Or upcoming seventh grade students have mentioned that he was told there was not going to be tech at next year. Was told that they're going to have help on here.
Can we have a tech director from the school?
Not really, no, yeah.
I would, I know that Sarah and the other teachers that were in the hiring committee were very excited about this idea. Um, they thought it would be very useful, they miss having that tech integrationist that we used to have. They thought that it was really helpful for the students to get that extra. Um, support with technology and gives them a little bit more flexibility in teaching them some. Things other than math, science, you know, just the regular. Let's use that curriculum in other areas.
I'm a huge tech fan, I just have, I'm struggling with like. Without seeing it, how, how does this integrate into curriculums or basics that we're doing? Because it seems pretty broad-based and I could see like bringing in someone that's going to spend a lot of time being tech support. And I'm not necessarily against that for teachers and, and things like that, but how does this integrate across pre-K through E and where does it get implemented then?
So, it was kind of like what, um, Kate was talking about earlier about how she, you know, would love to. Try to get the younger grades to use the maker space more, so this tech interventionist. Would enable her to support that. So that the younger, the primary grades can use that even more than. Uh, you know, the little bit that they've been using it with, that tomato sphere project. Um, so it's projects like that, uh. I think, uh, there's so many possibilities, but I also would love for this, uh, position to. The older grades also to teach them a little bit more about technology, where it's going and different parts of it. Uh, like coding, uh, social media, artificial intelligence, things like that. They're really not getting any introduction in the practice stance right now. And are you familiar with what's going on with the tech ed program here?
Um, I, I would say I'm familiar, I've, I've heard of some. Uh, for next year or?
For next year.
No, so that's not been shared with me, I know that's. Tonight you'll prove, um, the library media specialist, I'm not quite sure what, what that means for tech ed and how it's going to move forward. I, I think. What I asked Sarah about this position, one of the things that I had said to her is this position that. Are we creating this position for someone or is this a position that we want to take moving forward and I think it's. You know, my, I think we really have to, you know, I agree with Colin, really nail down. What that focus is because it really could be a separate standalone. This person could be doing courses where kids are coming, you know, coming through, or it really could be just a support, working one-on-one. With staff, you know, trying to, you know, change, you know, the curriculum, change the way that, you know, deliver lesson and, you know, deliver, you know, learning is done. Um, we do have tech supports in all of our schools, so this individual will not really be. See his text work, but sometimes they do kind of fall under that, say if someone's struggling with something, they quickly, but. That's not really the intention of this, is if someone's hard printing, that this person is spending forty-five minutes. Working on a print job when you pull away from kids, so I think that's just. Um, I think I have a better understanding really what this position is and what it can become. Uh, you know, I, I, and I say this where, you know, the answer does give you a year to kind of. Work through it, it's almost like a trial run and say, you know, just, you know, sit down in February and say, is this something which. We want to move forward with, um, or actually probably other experience, we have to start budgeting this, but I, I, I think there's just. I think there are a lot of people who have visions of what this can be and, but it's all kind of still. It's, it's, has not been solidified and that's, I'll just be honest, from us, from my perspective, that's always scary because. You can create and then also, you know, you have different appeal, and then if it doesn't pan out the way. Someone in the school wants it or a staff member, then it becomes, well, this is, it, it, that, it's, so I think it's just. Um, I'm, I'm not, after I turn four, I think it's, you know, it's a position that is, can be valuable, but I don't, uh. I still am not quite certain what the.
So.
The purpose or intent really truly is, so.
I, I was just going to say, um, when we were interviewing for the library technology position, I think. The reason that this was kind of born out of that is, there is a lot for the librarian to do with books and. Um, bringing books into the classroom and doing projects related to. Books, and then there's a lot for technology to do, and it's really hard, I think, for the librarian, librarian to do. Everything and to do it well and to really. Um, do both technology and library. When you look at the librarian's schedule, um, they see classroom, I think. Um, at least fourth through pre-K, they see regularly every week, I think fifth and sixth and seventh, they see. On a different basis, but their, um, schedule is filled with a lot of collaboration time, um, in mind. So that they have some free time to go into the classrooms and work with projects or pull books related to. Something that sixth grader teachers are teaching or the third grade teachers are teaching, um, and things like that. So the way I saw the technology specialist or integrationist or teacher or whatever you want to call them. Uh, would have a similar schedule or they would have a regular schedule where they were teaching some things. But they'd also have some flexibility time for collaboration, um, and like Chris said, you know, if they're in the building, they might. Be able to help with something, you know, that falls through and there's no one else to help with technology if they can, but. Um, it's mostly for trying to make technology a bigger part of. What students are learning here than they're able to do right now with.
So I have a couple of things. I know that all of our coaches started as tech integrationists. It didn't work, so they moved into a new, because of whether it was, we didn't have the space, we didn't have the. Technology, we didn't have the training, whatever, so all schools had this big, all these technology integrationists. Um, that didn't kind of work out, so they kind of moved and refocused, it became instructional coaches, if, if you will. And now we don't have them anymore. So, do we have the setup here to support that? The other, my other fear is, we make this. Tech integrationist and this becomes a glorified substitute. Somebody who gets pulled to be a floater sub because they don't have a set schedule. And then we just have a glorified substitute in the building, um, and I would hate to spend money on it unless we have. Because I, I know, I know the coaches in our district have been pulled for sometimes for a lot of subbing over the last few years. Because we don't have subs, I would hate to say we put all this money into hiring somebody. And, and that's how they get used, um.
So I think that, that what's great about. This situation is that we can use S R funds for next year and kind of see how it goes. Um, I, we did have two technology interventionists prior, um, I think. They both had kind of different focuses and the one you're talking about was the one that, um. Yeah, it kind of got morphed into the coaching and.
Well, I think it all, the whole district got morphed into this instructional coaching, I just think. I think it's great, the background of it, but I'm not sure, I mean, we don't have a maker space here, I don't think we do, I mean.
We somewhat, we have some three D printers.
Yeah, we don't have.
Exactly.
You know, like there's.
Uh, you have bits and parts kind of spread throughout, but not, you don't really have a formal program.
And I wonder if like starting and developing it that way first and getting. I mean, if you build it, they will, I don't, I don't know, I'm very, I'm hesitant, my other question is, are. Are we building it just for a s- specific person to take over this job? Or is it something that we truly, truly need? That would, that's my other, like, I'm on the fence right now on that. Um, I just would hate to see this person become a, a floater sub.
I don't think that, I don't think if someone's that into technology that they'd be very happy with that either.
Yeah.
But I would hope that when it happened, especially if they had, you know, a specific schedule of. What they're doing.
Uh, I'm still struggling with what, what they're trying to do curriculum based though. Because in one sense you're saying, you know, introducing technology to the classroom and then coding, those are two way different fields, even though it sounds like, I'm a computer guy. Being a computer engineer versus computer scientist, like, who is the person, that's, that's a big field of study. Robotics doesn't necessarily mean you know anything about coding, it just means you're, you're good on the engineering equipment side, so.
Or I guess other crap.
I'd see like, we, I think we need to drive to a state, to a place where we have an acre space and a computer lab, a real lab. Um, and that, that's one person that's, that's, that's a dedicated space where people are visiting them. And they're getting a lot of instruction, because when you're talking about coding, it's not something you drop in and say, hey. We're going to learn Spanish for seven minutes today and I'll see you in a month, um. Versus an interventionist, I think is a wonderful idea that maybe we can even spread across the S U to have. A few of these bodies that are bringing it to the lower levels and introducing technology and have to do that, but it's not necessarily the same.
Yeah, so, I think this is, I, I think this is a different focus, I also think the other difference from before. Yeah, so I think this is a, I think this is a different focus. I also think the other difference from before and now. Is that we do have one-to-one from books where we didn't have that before. So really, this person could go into a classroom and say, you know, uh, every Tuesday afternoon at one o'clock. They're going to this classroom, they're going to do technology for forty-five minutes. You know, I'm not saying that that's what the schedule is, but it. They don't need the lab specifically depending on, I mean, it it would be great to have a maker space. We do have the parts and pieces of that. Um, and you know, they could potentially use it in their projects. But they could learn a lot from this technology, you know, an hour a week or whatever it is. Um, just give them, give students a little bit more insight on. Computers, technology, and also um teaching some keyboarding to the younger grades so that they get more efficient.
I also think if we're gonna go that route, then we need to have a lot of. We gotta invest money in PD for teachers. Because they're gonna be the ones that are gonna have to carry this over into the classroom in once a week with a technology integrationist. I mean, they'll get one dip a week, just like the kids, and how's that gonna carry over into the classroom, so.
Well, that's what some of that collaboration time, this person will still have some of that time to go into the classroom and help the teachers. Um, you know, bring that into their program too.
But we haven't seen any data of any sort to say that we're weak in this area.
Well, we knew with the students not knowing how to type properly. I mean. I know I had typing in eighth grade.
And we had the boxes over her hands and you couldn't.
Yeah, and they're not, there, there's no time for teachers to be teaching that right now. Um, so I think that even just teaching them typing or keyboarding would be plus. To have someone come in and do that. Not necessarily, but.
They can do that classroom. Take fifteen minutes a day and. Those types of little things like that can add up to something much better.
We're seeing also how technology, you know, can be used in the classroom. Uh, will potentially motivate students to get more interested in technology as well. And bringing someone that can share ideas and share expertise with the teachers will help as well.
I don't, I don't disagree with more tech, but I think, you know. When I think global budget wise, this is an eye on the priority list when we're gonna start talking, have some serious conversations and I can't see the application outside of. Some one-offs unless we had a standalone facility. And and maybe it's encouraging people to use more some of the outside resources in the community, staff or tech center where they have. Week courses that they could immerse themselves in. And in a perfect world, I'd love to have this. I just don't. I don't see it right now and I can't see the impact when I have to have some serious budget discussions about. Basic core teachers and to your point Jeff, sadly data drives it and we're not. It's because I'm not tracking the data that we're not showing how far behind we are technology, but we are, but at the same point. That's not gonna affect funding a couple of years out when we're battling with money and it sucks. But, you know, that's like a wish list. It's not low on my community school-based wish list, but I do. Feel for it. And I like that, I like the idea, I just, that's where I stand right now.
Just a wish list thing.
I mean, that's a full year of, you know, funding all the. Access programs we just talked about, so what do I wanna swap and how do we affect more kids and. How how much effect does a K through third grader get with a? Fifteen minutes of here's a Chromebook and 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 how in-depth are we getting versus, I've I've seen some of the stuff that's clicking on. These wonderful programs, but it's, it's not integrating my kid into learning technology. There, you're learning how to use a screen. Um, so that's just unfortunately, we're. That amount of resources we're getting.
What grade level is it that they're, they get their computer here? What grade?
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten?
Doesn't get to take home, but.
They did in the pandemic.
Thank God.
They have access.
I just, uh, you know, I just think back of, it was an SU's shift a couple of years ago. To move away from the technology because it wasn't working SU-wide, I feel like. I mean, when I think about it, when I look at the evolution of. It started as this and now we went into, we needed instructional, like tier one instructional practice of coaches. It kind of shifted, you know, like.
Part of my understanding of why that was, because this happened the year before I. You know, got here was because there was no real vision. You know, it was kind of like, it was like, hey, this would be great to have this and it 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 became. A variety of things and as opposed to working towards something or having an established program or. And very few teachers were, I I should say from before I heard. There were teachers who were taking advantage of it, but like I said, it just, it was, it was not moving the needle and they really saw that's. There was a need to try to shift those resources somewhere else to, you know, to. To better meet the needs of our teachers and, you know, they went with the instructional coaches, which, as I said, we didn't have enough to really meet the needs. You know, that's, you know, we were, and those are four instructional coaches that were overworked and were kind of just, you know. You know, it's like a mi- um mile wide inch deep and, you know, and I think because they're just lack that real specific focus. So, so wasn't I, I I think it was because people didn't necessarily believe in it. It just was. It just wasn't a, a real like a laser focus on here's what we're doing, here's what what tech looks like, here's what, you know, we're moving towards. Was non-existent.
And I think that. Just creating a position and still not having that focus, I think, will become a.
And and I do think it's kind of interesting when we're having in the same conversation, we're talking about increasing experiential learning. Getting kids out there and doing things, but they also have this tech getting, you know, you know, there there has to be that 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 balance, because I think people hear. Second, they just see, you know, a set more screen time, more screen time. That doesn't necessarily mean more screen time, but that's to which we have to suss out. As a, as a district, as an SU, really what that tech now tech focus really is and how be responsible because. Um, you know, K could be on that Chromebook and I said, yeah, they're they're using tech, but, you know. Is it really, you know, are we moving learning at all? It's not, no, so.
So it sounds like to me right now that folks are not interested and. Um, I'll just invite Sarah if she has any other thoughts to bring it to the July meeting. And we could discuss it a little further. I don't think any, any change would.
Yeah, I think the July meeting.
If if she has a last pitch of, you know, maybe I didn't quite get all the grasp issues.
Uh, I'd just like to hear some curriculum drives and more specific to like six, seven, where's the application of where we're trying to get. Certainly the people who made a huge difference technologically in this world wasn't because they're hammering on a computer since they're kindergarten. They they learned the basic principles and expanded that into how they use it around them. So just given kid coding or this and that. I'd hate to see, as as the technology person's always been, it's a utility person in the school that knows more about computers than anybody and can drop in and talk about. Computers, but it doesn't mean they're actually driving the bus to.
Skill set for someone that's aptitude for computers is one thing, but if they can deliver it. As a, in a teachable moment with a, with any, a kid on up to an adult, that's what I, you know, you have a. Incredible basketball player that couldn't coach for more than thirty minutes, you know what I mean? Like that's, that's my kind of fear factor when. When we're putting this together, like, how do you, like, I just, I I don't even personally know how that, how you would hire or even put the. You know, the um job description together and quite yet, that's kind of where I'm kind of grasping at.
I love your, yes, Sarah.
Um, I think. I remember correctly, Sarah actually. Has sent me a job description that she thought was similar to what she was looking for. Does she send that to you too?
And do the teachers get? Tech PD that like, how's PD work at? Do they pick and choose or is there buckets that you pick from?
Uh, depends on the, the PD, I know in the past when you have uh like a. S U wide insurance, it really has been, you know, uh, employees have been allowed to self-select areas of growth. Uh, you know, things shifting a little bit to, there'd be a lot of school-based professional development, but we. There is a need still for differentiation with our staff and, uh, you know, provide, you know, different levels of needs if tech was a. P focus, I know the strategic plan is gonna drive a lot of the things that we're doing with professional development and. Um, uh, but you know, I'll, I'll be honest, I mean, tech is, you know, as I've asked, but it really is. There are teachers that are interested in, you know, how to bring it in and they're going to find ways and learn, then there are others who are just. Tech resistant and, you know, you can move them along, but it's just, but it goes back to. We still have to kind of create that idea, like what, what does that look like in the classroom? You know, what, what do we, what do we, what do we wanna see? But, you know, and so, uh, and we don't, we haven't, we don't have that. Conceptualized, I mean, so it really is, it's still, I guess, it's wide breadth and so, but.
And with that being said, I know like. When they first started, I was in the classroom at the time and. There were five out of the ten of us that used the tech integrationist.
Right.
So then, you know, does that become an equity thing, you know, are they going into every classroom or just the classrooms where teachers want them to come in? So then only fifty percent of your school's getting actually the tech piece of it, because their teacher feels comfortable doing it. So you also have to think about that and will it be mandatory for this person to go on every classroom or would it be on? Basis of like invitation only, so.
Well, I I know Sarah was very excited about this and she sent me this um. Uh, ad that Slate Valley is advertising right now for a technology integration coach and she said that she would pretty much. Duplicate that ad but take out um low forges because we don't use that. Um. So I don't, can I send this to you and you share it or?
Of course, I, sure, I could, yeah, but, and then, and this is also as a school-based, this is as a. District or, you know, I mean, as you, we haven't discussed this, so this really is a school-based discussion, so that's. Um, so like I said, Sarah may have a vision that's really is separate of that, what the SU is looking at or has discussed, so.
Um, and I know that the people that were at the meeting really liked the idea of being able to have someone come in and help support them because. It, there's only so much time in a day for them to take PD and there's so much to take. Um, and having someone right there that can help them with the technology allows them to take PD in other areas too that. Will only help them, students as well. Just gonna send you the link for text with that work.
Uh, no, it has to be through, you know, cause I can share. You know, it's, it's eight oh five and we're halfway through the agenda as well, so I just wanna, alright.
Um, why, why don't we just share this with everyone?
And that way you can have, maybe Sarah just.
Way in.
Respond to this and have to.
That sounds good. Alright, um, next up, director's orders. Do I have a motion?
So. Director's order?
Yeah, all in favor? Approval of minutes from five nine. Any comments? Um, I do as no one else does. So there were a few um spelling and grammar errors, which I will forward to Christine. But on page two, I wanted to also mention that there's um no mention. That it was verified with Chris that there are funds and capital improvement to pay for the feasibility study and I just thought that that was important to add. Let me double check with you before we agree on that motion. All the other things were just correct. Um, so entertain emotions. Emotional changes. Thank you, Abby. Any discussion? All in favor? Superintendent's report.
Okay, I'll be, uh, this really should be informational, uh, always. So a lot of this is, like I said, just for you to kind of review. At the end of the year, um, we're preparing for graduations, but in some things up. Uh, there are two items I just wanna highlight here. One is uh that Rufflin Town School is scheduled for a PCB sampling this summer. Uh, so when we have more information, we will disclose that, but that typically take. Uh, pretty, it's, it's a non-intrusive process and, you know, obviously have happening of the course, hopefully over the course of the summer. Um, and then once they do the sampling, typically it's around six to eight weeks before we receive. Uh, results, so uh, so we could be receiving the results for Thanksgiving. Uh, and then that'll just tell us what the next steps would be around mitigation or mediation uh with that as well, so. Uh, so we'll keep it posted and keep you updated uh as to where we're at. I know, uh, Sarah. Has already worked on the uh, the letter uh that uh, which was sent out to the community just to. Basically let it know that we're up for sampling, here's what it's going to be, but it said the fact that it's occurring, you know, during summer hours. Summertime won't be as um a bother as it was in other schools who do it day, so. And the other thing is around the legislative updates. There is a veto session occurring a week from today, um, so therefore all of the uh updates in terms of what the, the. Impact of the, you know, decent, you know, legislation, the bills. Uh, we won't know until after that veto session, so what's, I'm talking with Jeff Francis, who are executive director, does a very nice job of. Providing a recap for all the superintendents. He is a hope and anticipation, I spoke with him today, is really having that in early July, July. So our goal would be to have that for the board entry, uh, just uh, particularly as we're looking at budget impacts and budget discussion. Uh, there might be some pieces there that uh we want to discuss and talk about. I know Lewis has his eye on a couple of things as well about this, so. And like I said, the rest is just, uh, like I said, for information, so if any questions, I'd be more happy to. To answer them.
Alright, the principal's report is in your packets. Since Sarah's not here, is there anything anybody wants to bring up? Bring on, um, in your packets were the spring map and behavior incident data um that. Um, was not asked for um for this meeting, so I like to push it to discuss this meeting. And then that brings us to contract recommendations. I would like to thank Joe online for being here for so long and reading for this. Uh, Joseph Bertoloni is um on, here to be recommended for the new library. Technology teacher. Abigail Chery is also a for a doctoral move. And then I'll take a motion for professional staff.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Tim. Um, Joe, did you want to unmute and introduce yourself gradually since that?
Hi, oh, hi, everyone. Thank you. Um, I've actually been really interested in the conversation that you all have been having about technology integration. As it's something that I've done in several of my previous positions and it's something that I'd love to have a conversation with any of you about. Um, especially the idea of keyboarding and bringing um coding into the classroom. Uh, as well as robotics. It's all stuff that I have some experience with. Um, through my time working on the board of Vitaler. Um, but yeah, I just, uh, thank you, everyone, uh, for having me tonight. Um, my name is Joe Bertoloni. I have been a teacher for about uh eighteen years now, I think, um, and I've been in Vermont for ten. Uh, and I've been a librarian for about half of those. Um. Uh, I love books, I love reading, I love the idea of getting uh as many kids reading as possible and getting as many books as possible into the hands of kids. Uh, however we can do that. Um, I'm a staunch believer in the idea that Red Clover is one of the best programs in the state for young children. Um, and I'm also a big fan of programs of just global read aloud, which helps our students, um, some of whom might. Never think about leaving Vermont, really go and experience the world by sharing books with other kids around the country, around the state and around the world. Um. Uh, I really look forward to working with everybody. Um, and like I said, I really would love to continue those conversations that you all were having earlier. About technology integration, because it's something I do know a little bit about. Um, thank you very much.
Great, thank you so much. Alright, under su- support staff, we have one new hire, Gina Stevens. And extracurricular, um, three. Alexander Fox, Linda Mullen and Sean DuBois, all um elementary summer school teachers. And I think we just need a motion for the extracurricular. Chris, is that correct? Thank you, Jeff.
Teacher.
All in favor? Moving on. Moving on. Um, we have two re- resignations, one Shirley Bridgman, um, from a pre-K para educator, uh, because she is going to be G R C S U special educator, para educator. Um, and James Willis, custodian. Take a motion to approve those reservations. Thank you, Abby. Um, the vacancies from the SU are in your packet. For you to review at your leisure. And next up is the executive committee and the SU meeting highlights. The S, at the SU meeting last week, we were introduced to the strategic plan, which looks great. And that was included in the folder. Um, there will be more information publicly as time puts on. Chris, did you want that?
Yeah, uh, so all, you all should have that in the, um, the shared board work folder that you have. Uh, we are in the process now of submitting information to, uh, to Patel for Kids. That is the organization that we've worked with. Once they have collected all this information, we actually have a call Thursday with, uh, representatives and the woman who worked with us. Um, we will then have a nice professional-looking document that we will share out with the families. Our goal would be to, to we're not going to do anything in July, uh, probably, you know, late August, right around back to school. Somewhere we do the portrait of graduates. Um, when back to school information goes out, we will then, uh, you know, share information with families, rescue plan, what that means, and also uh, look at, you know, open house, uh, how provide information to our families at that time as well. Um, we did set up a, a report to the, uh, you know, a report online to our G R C S U board. Uh, what we'd like to do is also, even though we were reporting back to the G R C S U board, we will bring that same report back to local boards. Just so they can have an understanding, an idea about where we're at and uh, is there adjustments have been made or have any discussions about, you know, what, what that looks like within each of our districts, so. But, uh, we're excited about this. I think we had, there's a lot of work there. Um, we have a lot to, to do in the next five years. Um, but I think, uh, you know, these discussions that we've been having tonight, I think are, are, you know, critical. I think they're, they're very timely considering with, uh, some of the conversations we're having with strategic plan and some, uh, some things we have moving forward, so.
Thank you. Um, also, since our last meeting, I attended the board chair continuing education with the V S B A. Uh, and it, it was uh, one hour webinar and then a seven hour, uh, in-person conference up at Brilic. It was, it was very informative that I went. Um, one thing they discussed, uh, quite a lot about was executive sessions and when to use them and how to use them. Um, so I, I did type up a little bit of some notes on that, so I will share that with you all, um, later, just to save time. Um, I already discussed the CLA people waiting issues that, and I also discussed a little bit with Louis, so we're all aware and will be looking at that as we get into budget season. Um, another piece I took away was that our board retreat, we had originally scheduled um, out at Collins Lake House. And because we will be discussing board business, it does need to be open to the public. So I'm thinking that we should probably find a different location because I don't know how many people can fit up Collins place, but I'm not sure he's opening it up to the public either. So, um, we do have that later on, talking about the board retreat. So maybe taking a minute now just to discuss where we would like to have it that evening instead of Collins House so that it can be more accessible to the public. I do have some ideas.
And we will have to record the meeting as well.
So in the past, we've had the retreat at our meeting location and just catered some I think we did some pizza themselves last, last year. Um, before that, they've done it at the Rufflin Country Club at South Side, different years, um, just to have a different location. I, I'm open to whatever the board would like to do. I believe Corey Valley usually um, does it at the meetings and just brings food in like pizzas.
Corey Valley is looking to do it at the Rufflin Country Club this year. And it would be a meeting and then once it means during then it would be a, a dinner and.
Goal setting.
Well, the, the goal setting is part of their meeting, so.
So the dinner would be afterwards and not discussing board business.
Right, right. So.
We have backrooms, fine. So the background, we can have a whiteboard and all that, set up the tech. I'm not super fancy, so I'm fine working there.
So if they are not available on the eleventh, do we have a second?
I'm sorry. Does that have a good Tuesday?
Well, that's when our meeting is scheduled and that's fixed in Chris's schedule.
I mean, if we need to move it, we can move it, but that's.
Just with summer plans, it's like to get so tricky.
As I say, other boards have opted to keep it on the same date just because people started to schedule around their meetings, but I do know that Corey Valley, because they were looking to hire a facilitator, if facilitators are not available, they were discussing other, you know, looking at other dates as well, so.
I, I would ideally like to keep it on a safe date. Somebody starts to get crazy sometimes. So.
I'm assuming that more than, no more than ten people show up for the public, we get a lot of bricks. I don't know, so we can open.
So.
It's a pretty good space for whiteboards and tech communities, living, channeling, and whiteboard. Good for us. I mean, again, we can accommodate up to thirty here, bring it outside if so much of the public shows up, so.
So first choice would be, let's just go around. Start with you, Jeff.
I just said they weren't available.
I said if they're not available.
Oh, yeah, okay. I thought you said they weren't emphatically.
Oh, no, no, no. I said if they're not available. So that would be, um, your first choice. What was your first choice?
Oh, I don't care. Um, whatever's available that day. Be my first choice. Um. Does Brooks have good seating?
They got a good space with their.
Like their chairs, country clubs chairs for long meetings are tough.
I mean, they're really good to hang out and drink for a while, so. I mean, I would prefer the country club. Um, I just thought you said they weren't open, but we have to accommodate if we need to, but.
Okay.
So it's like a backup, no problem.
All right, so, so we'll start with that and then we'll go to South Side if they're not available and we'll, we'll talk to you about Prince. That sounds like a good plan.
Sure.
So does Christine look at those? Okay, thank you. Um, just a, a note, one more thing that the, I took away from the meeting was that the board should assess its performance annually. So that includes adherence to norms, protocols, procedures and policies. How have we affected system's success in meeting our goals? Um, continuous learning and development by making sure that you're paying attention to those V S B A, um, emails that you get and if you have an opportunity to check out some of their webinars, they, they do have some good features sometimes. Um, and the effectiveness of community outreach and public communication. So those four items I will include also in that little document that I'll send out to you all. Just to think about for our retreat, uh, just to kind of keep that in mind as we're looking at, uh, you know, our goals from last year and where we were. How we ended up and then what we're thinking about for our goals.
Did the first year. Yeah, it was, yeah. Especially the budget part.
Yes. That'll come in handy.
For July eleventh, does the board want to keep the time still at six or would you like to move that earlier or later? I'm just, I'm chatting with Christine now, just to issue and check first thing in the morning, so I just.
In the past, we've set the retreat to be a three-hour meeting to include dinner. Um, so I don't know, I know Colin, you struggle sometimes to get here by six. So do you think moving it earlier would be more helpful or just teaching?
Later's better.
Yeah.
I just, we had swim lessons and things that bumped up to the six o'clock. Those are all gone. So later's better for me, quicker there.
I mean, if we're done early, we're done early. All right, so I think we're moving on now. So that now we're at policies. Um, so all of these policies are first reads tonight. And they have all been updated from the SU meeting, um, to include any changes that were made at the meeting. So I could go through them succinctly, but anyone wants to, or I could entertain a motion to accept all of them at once. It's up to you.
Since you guys have all read and reviewed that, I think we could do it. One shot.
Any discussion at all? About any of them, any thoughts, concerns?
I think we said this last time at the SU level, like this is our time to make changes.
Correct.
And if not, this is gonna go, so.
Right, so it's, um, I know that on the ten, there was some discussion about the board's role. And we've been going to couple lines, so it's more in line with how we operate now. All in favor? Right, thank you, Jeff. That brings us up to the next meeting. It anticipated to be at the Rufflin Country Club at six P M on July eleventh. If not, I will let you know. And one more opportunity for teacher, staff and community comments. Seeing as there are nine, um, good in welfare.
I'll be here tomorrow morning making breakfast for all the graduates. And all the retired. All the retired, we got all the retired people coming, Dutch and Randy and all the Teresa and all the retired teachers, a lot of them are coming, Lynn Ryan.
Um, that's awesome. And that just reminded me, the circle newsletter. Um, if, for anyone not getting it, if you aren't getting it, just email, it, it is available online. And if you'd like your own paper copy, you can email, uh, therufflinetowncircle@gmail.com and request it. And, um, I will just like to add that I took my dog for a walk in Northwood and came upon a few different eyes groups, the middle school, um, program that summer studies. Um, some of them were going fishing, some were going biking, and some I think were going hiking. Uh, they all looked like they were really good moves and spirits and they were having fun. So it's really nice of the teachers and, um, administration were able to pull together a program that allows the kids to do something outside outside of the class thing. Um, and secondly, I attended the tractor award nights, uh, last weekend. It was very nice to see, uh, all the hard work the students did to complete their education at one of our SU schools.
Oh, um, I just actually have to thank the whole staff. Our little guy has had some, um, metal cook concerns this school year and um, we have been very open for the whole staff because he's kind of a timer and will ask anybody for anything. So we needed really the whole staff not to feed up or any, being in charge of his stupid black bag of his that has his EpiPen and we've had, it was, it's been great. Everybody's been, you know, really looking out for him. Um, you know, um, the nurses have been great, you know, the teachers have the with the, his kindergarten teacher leaving at the end of the year, the person that stepped in has been wonderful and uh, so that it's, it's really reassuring, you know, to, to know, like, because we were like, we don't care about HIPAA. He will come in and say, hey, can I have a snack and, you know, or just, you know, so it was just nice that, you know, the whole staff has been really supportive of of him and making sure he's safe while he's here, so it's been great.
One, one thing that popped in my head, when you're talking about the kids, I don't know if they're walking over to Northwood, if the groups are or whatever, but like I did run through the path that, you know, Matt Branch, I was carving out last year and it's really nice back there. So so it was great to see like something like that kind of come fruition, all the effort that was put into buying that property and everything. It's really nice, nice run. Um, and then I just got a kick out of, uh, uh, the five through eight concert was, you know, I had a great time with, you know, Michael Jackson and all that. Well, um, in one of my past lives in the line business, um, the rep for Vogel, uh, was in one iteration of Toto. So they played Africa at our concert. I took a small clip and sent it to him, who then sent it to uh, Lacheter, who was the lead guitarist for Toto when that song came out. So it went all the way out to California, you know, to, uh, see what these, these kids do. And, uh, what Mr. Altad does and, uh, Mr. Whitman, great program, so.
Well, let's echo, um, what Tina saw. I was here doing Four Winds and saw the older kids going through the trails and, uh, with fishing poles, which is cool. Um, and just thanks the staff for a great year. Um, we're, we're through first grade with my, with my son. So as a parent, it's been great to see the camaraderie that the teachers have to offer. And now shameless plug for any pre-K to fifth grade parents next year, we're going to be doing Four Winds. Um, so we're trying to get in touch with the teachers, hopefully get in touch with the parents to be involved with your, your two kids' studies and get them outside and be part of their classroom. It's pretty special that we have that program here and our teachers welcome to Sam, and so. Come join us.
Thank you. Anything for me, Chris?
Uh, no. Keep it as a point, I guess. That's, that's okay.
All right, I will take a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Jeff. All in favor?